Well, thank you for coming, board members. We really appreciate your hard efforts here voluntarily. And welcome, everybody, to this Board of Directors meeting in the Harlan Community School District, May 16, 2022. And first thing we have here is the public hearing part of the meeting. And we'll call the meeting to order, and we determine that we do have a forum, especially got a good forum. Now, that changes here. We're glad you're here. And so the first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda for the public hearing.
So moved.
Very good. We got so moved by Joni and seconded by Joe. You've got Catherine typing. It matters. Okay. And how about a discussion? So this is open to the public. And have any comments as far as the amendment of the current budget? I think we have to turn it over to Brian, if that's what Superintendent wants to do.
Well, I sent some preliminary information out.
Wait, I'm sorry. Did we approve? Did we all say?
You did vote.
We voted.
Oh, no. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And all those against, nay. Very good.
Okay. I did send out some preliminary information, and that's really kind of what I'm going to go over with you. The increase in the instructional part of the budget, majority of that came from just the timing of some stimulus expenditures. Included in that was one of them that we actually didn't anticipate, nor did we know about till the first part of the year, is when the governor authorized those additional staff retention, teacher retention payments. So that actually had to be paid out right away. So that actually added to our expenses. We also received some additional preschool funds as part of the stimulus packages, and that is included in that. But an awful lot of it is, is we, with the stimulus expenditures, you just don't really know when they're going to fall. It's predicated when you can get stuff. It's predicated when things actually happen. So that's majority what we have on the instructional part of it. The support services line there, that was kind of mirrored the changes in the instructional budget. The big thing in there was, we did this past year, we did purchase those two used buses. One of them was last summer, late last summer, and one of them this spring. We had the opportunity to do that. Really, all that was a timing issue because we had it in our three-year PEPAL budget. We just accelerated from one, and accelerated from the one year to make that happen. And that was a great deal. And a lot of it is, it's predicated on that, is when you can get stuff out. It's when you have the availability to get things. So a lot of times, something may go a little earlier or a little later than normal. The non-instructional budget, which for common folk, that's the nutrition fund, that was due to two factors. We, right now, are still under the federal funding where they're paying for all the lunches, so that has helped us build up some reserves. So we were in need of some equipment to be replaced, and so we decided, given the fact that we had the extra funds now, that it was time to get some of those additional pieces of equipment. In addition to this, just like everywhere else, the food costs were obviously higher this year. Hopefully, hopefully, that backs off a little bit. And then finally, the only change we really had in the other expenditures part was, there was an adjustment to the AEA flow-through amount. When you do your original aid and levy budget, it'll give you an estimated amount, and then they come out with it later after the budget's all approved. Touch on two or three other things. It really only affected three funds here. The first one was PEPAL. That was from the bus purchases. The second thing was from the nutrition fund, and a lot of that was equipment. And we did catch up some repairs there that needed to be done. And then the third thing, like I said earlier, in general fund, it was stimulus spending. So that's really all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Okay. So we've had our discussion, and there's no action at this time. We'll have it under the regular meeting where we'll vote on this approval of the budget. So would someone like to make a motion for adjournment?
We need to accept the presentation.
Okay. Accept the, so we need a motion, accepting the presentation. Okay. So moved. So Joe moving, and Greg, seconded.
Thank you.
So we'll move to the adjournment. Oh, all those in favor, aye? Aye. And all those not in favor, nay?
The audience is making their way through.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. Just don't know how to bring anything. Anyway, next, we'll have the adjournment, a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. So we have Al moving, making a motion, and Jade, seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, we move to the regular meeting, and so we'll call that to order. Then we have a forum. And first thing I'll mention is that this is a public forum, so in accordance with Policy 213, public participation in board meetings is encouraged. And in order to assure citizens are heard and board meetings are conducted efficiently in an organized manner, the board has set aside this specific time for public comment. Without reading the rest of this, Catherine, we have known that submitted a request to talk under the public forum. So next, we move to Item C, the approval of the agenda. So do we have a discussion on the agenda, or a motion to approve the agenda, as we've received it? Move to approve the agenda. Al moves to approve it. Second?
Second. Jade?
Joni was a little faster on that. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, we have the discussion items, and so at this time, we'll turn it over to Superintendent Parnette.
Yeah, well, I'm going to start with Mr. Perlich. He's the...
I would like to vote first. Yeah, I want to introduce three superstars, but only two of the three who are here today. We've got Kaia Becher, which is going to go to Harding University. These three were our speakers yesterday at the commencement, did a phenomenal job. I mean, it was really, the speeches were awesome. Savannah Musage is going to go to the University of Lincoln. Nebraska, we won't hold that against you. Tyler Shelton was our third one. He's going to go to Harvard University. A little bit about these three. I mean, this is a pretty prestige honor that they have here. The top 10 in the class have a chance to submit a speech at the end of the year, and then it goes to a committee, that big, the top three that would be able, that's going to present at the commencement exercise, and they're selected. And it's great, it's a big honor when you're in a class of 123 students, and you're one of the top three that get to present. It's pretty special. So I just wanted, they're kind of my highlight, my superstars, that I wanted to bring to the board and let you guys be recognized for that honor. So. Good job. Lady studying.
I think I might do business.
Me as well.
Business?
Yeah.
Do you know what Tyler's?
Political science.
Political science.
Yeah, I think so.
You did a very good job speaking. That's not an easy thing to do for a political speaker.
And that microphone was tricky.
Yeah. Am I close enough? I hope so.
You don't want to be, yeah, you just don't want to touch it, but you got to get it really close. So thank you. Good job.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. And thank you, guys, because we are graduating and everything, and just thank you for all you guys do. How's it been, Mr. Perlich?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Well, we appreciate you, and we wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
We'll wait to hear all your stuff.
Thanks.
I promise you, you could go if you wanted to, or you may stay.
I have a question. I was like, I have to...
Is it the actual? I said...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys for having me.
This is pretty good. I got a few DPA students on there.
Yeah. Okay. We'll start, um, should you start with the high school? Is it at the bottom?
Yep.
No, elementary is at the...
Okay, we'll go to the higher.
We had, I believe, 10 students that went to Dallas, Texas, to the National Business Competition. And we had three, the three on the bottom were in the top 10 place winners, and the one in the middle is Dominic Shaven. He was third in the advanced county, a county class. So he was third in the nation there. And the other one, I believe they were in the top 10. The one was, I believe, eighth, and the other one was just in the top 10. So here's how they were scored. Corey Magus is the far-right one. She did, I think it was ethics and professionalism, work professionalism. And the other one would have been Samuel Buman. He did economic research and computer security, is what he was in. But that's, once again, that's...
Nationally.
Pretty, pretty cool to be able to national recognize there in your top 10.
So Mr. Perlich gets kudos today because Mr. Moser is watching baseball in Sioux City with his son, and Mr. Mueller is watching golf with her, his daughter. So they, they're all off in different places. But these are the citizens of the week for elementary schools. So Mr. Moser has that each week, and citizens of the week is C-O-W, so they have a calvest that they get to wear, so the kids get pretty excited about that. And then middle school, students of the quarter is kind of similar. They do something, but just every quarter. And I think Mr. Mueller's explained this before, but it's not just good grades, and it's the all-around character of the child. So good grades, doing good things, helping someone out. So several students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade that received students of the quarter. And then Levi Schekinger performed in the all-Iowa Honor Band from the middle school, so he was in the middle school. So that's very, very cool. Very cool. Okay. Good job, students.
Yes. Very good.
Okay.
You want one?
Okay. So I, my report is, I'm going to introduce Matt Benmola, and he, come on up, Matt. Matt is going to talk to us about our facility committee and just all of the work that we did and all that the committee did to help us, and several of you were on that committee, but Matt's here to represent the committee.
Hi, so I'm Matt Benmola. I've been on the facilities committee since last fall. I think we toured the school. I know Jim was there. And in January, we started meeting, what, once or twice a week, Jade, for a couple, or a month, for a couple hours, Greg was on it. Brian's been there. And basically, the group kind of got together, I believe, made up teachers, staff, faculty, parents, grandparents, community members from all across the county, and basically tried to assess the wants versus the needs, and what does the next 20 years or longer look like for Harlan Community Schools. And so I believe Steve Einson gave a report on that last time, so I'm just here to ask the board's support and to ask the board to file the resolution, to get it on the ballot.
And this is called the resolution ordering and election on the issuance of 22,009, 22,900,000 general obligation school bonds.
So that's our first action item. So Matt is here, and we did have to collect a certain percentage of signatures from all over our voting community, and which we have those, Catherine has those. And then this next step is to have you vote on putting this on the ballot, and then once it's on the ballot, or once you approve this, then we can take it to the auditor to place on the ballot. Isn't that good?
Right. So we, I know my wife, Kristin, and I collected about 80 signatures, and we, maybe it took us two days, just put it to a few track meets. I know your granddaughter collected some signatures from the track team, and I didn't have any no's myself. I haven't heard of any, but had some questions. I think the community's, there's a lot of support. I think there's a lot of people eager to really hear the details and understand the work that's went in, and how the money is going to be used, and then understand the penny sales tax as well. So I've learned a lot being on the committee. A lot of good questions have been asked, and I think it's exciting. We need to get out and explain what we're trying to do, and people then can go vote.
Yep. That's the next. So once this is, this is approved, then we have de novo. We'll be working with the group to just say next steps and tell us how we can communicate.
Comments, questions?
I know a lot of time's been put into it, so like everyone else on the committee, thank you for all that you've done so far.
Thank you. I think you did a really good job. We had people that wanted to build a whole brand-new facility, and we have others that didn't quite understand that our roof leaks and our HVAC shot, and there's a lot of things that, all the money that we've had and used has been used extremely well, but there's a lot of opportunity to take what we have and make it better.
I appreciate the members of this board that took the time to be part of that committee, because I know that those were long meetings and not always just all fun, because there's a lot of things to go through, but...
I asked a lot of really good questions.
I asked some very good questions. I just wanted to put that in the notes.
And I heard Greg and Brian had the best proposal. I don't know. We were pretty solid.
They're a smaller group, maybe, yeah.
Ours was not the way we went. So we were a little odd, a little different, but we were in the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
I'm guessing we're looking for a motion?
I move that the board accept the petition as presented by the constituents of Harlan Community School District, and ask the board secretary to validate each signature and present the petition to the county auditor for a special election on September 13, 2022.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, it carries. Catherine? And so we're ready to move on to Action Item Two, the personnel report.
Yep. It's pretty self-explanatory. This month, we had some resignations, and we hired four new people while we're reinstating one, Greg, and then hired a new substitute. And if you want to scroll down just a little bit, these are the classified and certified openings that we continue to have. We're still really struggling to find or get applications for the STEM and the SPED teacher right now. We do have an application for a kindergarten teacher, and we'll be holding that interview next week. And we're also holding interviews this week for custodians and the administrative office manager in the elementary. So we're moving, we're moving right along.
Did we get the art position filled?
So what we're doing with the art position, good question, Joni, is we are, we are, our elementary art teacher is a part-time employee, and she has agreed to go full-time. So we're going to have her come up and do a couple of classes in the high school, and then our middle school art teacher is going to do a couple as well. So we've creatively filled that position, but maybe next year, or, I mean, we'll continue to look to hire for that.
But both of those were willing to...
Yep.
Great.
Yeah, we'll hopefully keep it on the docket and keep recruiting, but it's just really hard finding our teacher right now. And then the kindergarten teacher is, we have a bigger kindergarten class this year, so we needed to, and our third grade was going to be really pretty big. I think we'd have like 27 and 28 in each class, and kindergarten is up to getting closer to 100, so we needed five sections of that, and we couldn't take from third grade to, so we are adding a kindergarten, which they were down a teacher anyway, so it's not an additional NTE, but that's kind of the way you have to do it at elementary, just depending on how many kids you have in each section. So kindergarten, it is open. And then special education, I don't know, we're still looking, but someone told me the other day that at University of Nebraska Omaha, in the special education department, there were two kids that graduated with special ed degree. So I just, that's kind of the world we live in right now. So see if we can find, that's why I told my son to get that.
Right. Get a little ticket.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Any discussion before we have a motion to approve the personnel report?
I'm going to stay with this one.
Okay, yes.
That's a name I wasn't real fond of.
Someone want to make a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
By Joe, and seconded by Jade. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, the next action item is the approval of the 2022, 2023 school calendar. And if you recall, and if I got my facts right, on the April 20 meeting, we approved the calendar except for the early out for professional development days. And I'll ask Superintendent Parnette to speak to that, what's occurred since then?
We pulled teachers, and they felt they'd rather do the afternoon. We also looked at each of those days, and if there were games that week, or what it might affect, and there's about three dates in general, so talked to the coaches, and Greg especially, and I think we're, they would propose that we leave it as-is right now and have early outs. Teachers would rather have early outs. So it would stay as-is, I guess.
Discussion on that.
I'm good with that. If all of those entities are good with it, I'm good with it.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have an approval then to approve the, or excuse me, a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 school calendar, as we have been presented?
So moved.
So moved by Joni, and seconded by Al. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay, the next item is the decision for reconsideration of early retirement deadline. So again, to just to jog our memories, last month, Mrs. Vermeister came in and asked for an exception. I did want to bring to your attention, let's see, I've got it here somewhere, before we discuss this, this is the Harlan Community School Voluntary Early Retirement Incentive Plan. And so this was approved by the board approximately a year ago. I think every year it's approved. And one of the stipulations in here is that, that the person requesting the early retirement come by November 30th. So the question is, is really before us, is whether we should overrule the recommendation of the administration. And according to this, in the last part of it here, it says, under nine, that the board has the right to waive any requirement or condition which is not part of this plan, and it does not establish any precedent. So the first point here is that we would be overriding the administration. And the second point is, is that although it says we do not set a precedent, in a way, it would be something that could be used in the future. What I would say, this is not a question whether the teacher is a good teacher, because I think we all know that she's a very good teacher, and this is not a merit-based policy that's based on whether the person is, you know, worthy of it or not. It's based on this policy, and so I wanted to mention that to you, remind you of that before we discuss it. So that will give it over to you all to tell us your thoughts.
Are you looking for a motion?
I think first, we should open up for discussion.
Well, I think the precedent issue, I think, is important here. It has to, there's a couple precedents. One is overriding an administrative recommendation. Has to, to me, has to reach a really high bar. And the other one is that the request was presented several months past the deadline date, and that money's already been put back, and I don't know how it, what's the correct way to say that, put back in the management fund, or whatever it is. So I think that, to me, the precedent thing is a big piece of this. I would agree with that statement.
I appreciate that you said it's not a merit-based policy, because as much as a motion, e-motion would like to make a decision, it really, we have to take that out of it. So I personally struggled a little bit with this. I appreciate that you said it's not merit-based, because it's not whether it's deserving or not. It's just whether it's something that we should set precedence with and overrule administration. So that's how I feel. It was a little bit difficult, I think, but when you say, you know, when a motion is taken out of it and it's not merit-based, it makes it easier, I think.
And Jade, I believe a corollary with this is that, is that we can decide to amend or change the plan if that's, you know, we have the ability to table and say, hey, we want to come up with a different plan that is merit-based, or whatever the board wants to do. But in a way, once you set the precedent, it might have to be considered what's done going forward.
Yeah. And I too struggled too. I, we all know, she is a fantastic teacher, but 33 years?
It's been a while, yeah. Sorry. There's my laugh.
Decades of teaching.
It's been a while.
We'll do that. You know, and I think she has given her all to this district, and that, that was or is hard for me to do that, but I understand, on the flip side, I understand that, you know, we have policies, and we have deadlines, and it's like, when do we go off course? And if we do, then, like you said, then next year is, you know, it's going to happen again. You know, it's tough. It's tough, because like I said, Michelle's done a fantastic job.
Any other discussion before we ask someone to put a motion forward? Would someone like to?
I would be happy to put the motion forward, that we would deny the, the request to override the administration recommendation in the case of the early retirement.
And maybe we could add and waive the existing requirement. Is that part of the...
You mean not waive, to approve part of the motion to not waive the...
Yeah.
Yes, I'm good with that.
To not waive what?
The request.
To not waive the requirement of the November 30th, 2020 deadline? Would that be a way to say that? That that would be the particular item of the policy that would be waived, if you agree with that?
That's fine. I mean, that's essentially what we're thinking about it.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Greg seconded the motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay?
Sorry.
Thank you so much for your service. The next item, action item, is the approval of the amended budget. And so we've discussed that in the hearing, and so we can bring it up again, see if there's any discussion, or we'll take a motion to approve that amended budget.
All motion to approve the amended budget.
Second. And we have the movement from Jade, and the second from Joe. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, E, action item, is the number six, approval of contracts and agreements. So A is the approval of the Timberline Building Services Addendum. B is the middle school warmer and oven bid. C is... C is elementary hot service line bid. And D is the approval of the extension of driver's education contract with Drive Safely. We can discuss these individually or all total and...
We probably, wouldn't we need to act on each one individually since the contract's sort of? I think so.
We do. Okay, thank you, Al. We'll do number A first then, approval of Timberline Billing Service.
So that is, that is just a service that we use for special education and so soon with IEPs, we can bill Medicaid and then get, get reimbursed. So that's something we talked about before, we're getting better at billing and then helping, it helps pay for, for the thresholds and anything special with that. They are kind of oversee names and help us to process it quicker. And we have this service for a while, I guess.
I believe that we approve this.
I'll second.
Okay, we have movement from Al and seconded by Jade. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next is B, middle school warmer oven and bid.
Okay. So last week, or last month, we, we, yeah, I'll speak on behalf of Nutrition Services Department. Last month, we approved the bid for new warmer and ovens. And when I went to tell them that we had approved it, he came back and said, oh, I'm sorry, the bid was wrong. So they only priced it for one warmer and one oven, and this is for both warmers and both ovens. So it's just fixing the bid, so.
And yes, it is factored into the budget amendment.
Yeah.
I should have gone to the building ovens.
Yeah.
Move to accept the bid. Okay, we have Greg moving to accept the middle school warmer and oven bid. And seconded from Joe, we have the second, Catherine. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, we have the elementary hot service line bid.
Yeah, I'll speak on that again too. So we received a $12,000 bid, or $12,000 grant, I'm sorry about that, for a new serving counter for the elementary school. And we would like to, we would like to, and these are just a little bit bigger than the ones we currently have. The ones we currently have are over 10 years old and need to be replaced. So this grant is, is helping us with the costs. So the $12,000 grant minus the, can you go back up, Jenny, to the sideways paper? Sorry about that. I think it only costs just over $7,000 for both of them. I'm so sorry. So we'd like to, down just a little bit.
No matter what I do, I'm turning.
Oh, thanks, Al. So we'd like to give it to Bolton and Hay. They came in at the lowest price, plus they're going to give us $100 back for trade-in and...
What company was that?
Bolton and Hay.
Okay.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Second one.
The second one there. Sorry.
Actually, they weren't the lowest bid. They were the, the highest bid, but they had gave us quite a bit more.
The most of, yes.
The net would be.
Yes.
So what school, which?
The elementary building.
Primary?
They're all one cafeteria.
Right, and they eat and they don't need to get one.
Yep.
Okay.
Does anybody have a question about that? Just going to spend that grant money.
We have no use for the, the old ones where the cheap bed would help us anyway.
They're usually, by the time you're getting rid of them, Greg.
Oh, yeah, I'm.
You're, you're actually kind of happy if somebody takes them out.
He's making certain.
The other, the other.
Absolutely.
So we need a motion to approve the bid from Bolton and Hay? For new ovens or warmers in elementary. Off the service line, thank you.
Very good. So we have Jade making the motion and the second.
Some move.
Joanie, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? The next action item, E, D, the approval, the extension of driver's education contract with Drive Safely LLC. This is the next item.
This is where if we were smart, we would have gone into this.
Smart and gutsy.
Well, that's true.
I was thinking that, but.
Didn't have any nerve, you know, there are problems.
I sent four children through this.
Yeah, there are people that want to do it.
Right. And are patient enough to do it.
Brian can probably speak to that.
Jenny, you want me to speak to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
What we typically do is, on these, is we make it a so many-year contract. Well, it was up again here. Without, we're allowed just to get informal bids, which I attempted to do. We, we did get one from a company in Carroll. They would bid 350 for the in-district kiddos and 375 if it's an out-of-district kiddo. The other company that we have contacted in the past won't even bid. They said they can't find help. And I also inquired of a couple of them that are based out of the, the larger cities and they are not going to do it unless you have somebody on staff that they can hire, which essentially means they're not going to bid. So, long story short, after having the, the short conversation with the, the company from Carroll, I reached out to Andrew Sanquist and I said, do you have interest in, in extending your contract? And what kind of dollars would you talk? What kind of, what kind of provisions? And they said they would stay within the same provisions that we have the contract right now. They did not increase price. They were at 340 and they're going to stay at 340. So they actually would have the little bit of the two that I was able to obtain. And they've done a great job, so I would see no reason why we'd, they wanted to extend it for three years just, just for a little bit more stability. So I definitely think it'd be the way to go. What's the total look like for a year for the service? Just asking. Jim, it depends on the amount of students, because they get paid by per student. Just to give you a real quick synopsis of what happens, we're required to provide that, but we are only required, the district actually only out-of-pocket pays for the kids that are free and reduced. Okay, it, it's like, what ends up happening, it's considered a fee. And if they're full-priced students, then we get 340, the company gets 340. If it's reduced, we get 170, but the company's still going to get 340. And if they're free, we obviously don't, aren't able to collect anything, but the company still gets 340. And to answer how much the actual cost is per year, it, it's going to float depending on the amount of students and the amount of frame ratings.
What's our percentage of free and reduced now, approximately?
As a district?
Yeah.
It's about 35.
About, I would say 30 or 40.
It's a little higher across the street. But typically speaking, you know, I, I probably couldn't give you an exact answer, Jim, other than to say if you base, base it upon the fact that we're about 33% and the, the amount that we outweigh to this company, depending on the amount of students, runs anywhere from $32,000 to $40,000. That would tell you our probably actual cost is somewhere in the $12,000 to $13,000. That would be a very simplistic way of looking at it.
Sure. About the price of an oven.
But that oven makes a lot of people happy.
Good drivers.
They've, they've been very reactive to how, you know, the facility we provide and everything. It's worked out real well. We've really never had any problems.
Very good. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the extension of driver's education contract with Drive Safely LLC.
Okay, movement by Joe and a second.
Second.
We have a second from Al. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? So we're up to action item number seven, policy review schedule first reading. I believe Jade, Monte and Al were on this ticket.
Yep.
I found a couple of questions that I had and looking at it, and they got, both of those got answered sufficiently. The nice thing about our system now is that we kind of got a, a pretty good group of policies and it doesn't take a lot of changes, but, so I didn't see any, any changes that we need to make on these on the first reading.
I didn't harass you, but it's still not my original, where I can ask a question in the margin and then have it answered. I didn't see anything, maybe.
Al was doing it like crazy. Do you have here, can you do it with you?
No, I did agree with you. Bring it in this weekend.
Because I even opened up the new one and it didn't let me.
Did you go to the tab on the 22, 23?
Yeah. The first time I got in, it was super easy and I asked a couple of questions and then now it hasn't let me again. But I didn't see, maybe you took care of it.
Jane, we blocked it because they know you had two good questions.
Yes, my questions were too hard.
Second reading, you have to go, so.
Okay, it's a motion for the policy review schedule first reading. So moved by Al, Catherine, and a second?
Second.
And a second by Jade. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Next, we have number eight, policy review schedule second reading. Up for discussion? Okay, can we have a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved by Greg for the policy review schedule second reading. Catherine?
I'll second.
We have a second from Joe. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Moving along to the consent agenda nine, and so we have two major items here, the minutes for April 20. I guess that has to be handled individually first, doesn't it?
No, we can all.
We can do all.
Do it all.
So we can do A, B and C, okay?
Do it all.
And we can break them out if anybody wishes to, so a lot of discussion on those items.
I do not have any questions on the bills.
I did have one little thing. I was going to ask Brian what the Harris Bank was and see if that's a...
Harris Bank?
Yeah.
Such a P card? Harris Bank P card is our credit card that we use every month. It's used, we use, excuse me. It's predominantly used for when people travel, when we have to have supplies where you have to order them and pay by credit card. It, it's used in a few other instances where you have to purchase online. But it varies in month from month to month. A lot of it, it's got to do with how much does travel happen that month.
And then certain, only certain individuals can sign or use it.
Yeah, give you an example, if, and this is just a, an example. We might have a teacher that's going into a conference in Des Moines. They got to stay overnight and they're going to have to have a few meals. Then Penny will check it out to them. They have to return it along with the receipt, then it has to be approved by Scott. So that would be a pretty simple example.
Okay, other questions or discussion? So did we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Jade and a second?
Second.
By Joanie. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Here we are to each adjournment. I think we should discuss this for a while.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Jade made the motion. We got Joe, Al, seconding it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, nay? Okay.